Take a walk every day.
The work session for the Stanton City Council is now in order for August 12th, 2021. I would like to read a statement concerning remote participation. On August 12th, 2021, I received a request from Councilor Mead to participate remotely in the August 12th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councilor Mead's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedure memorandum number three, I move to allow Councilor Mead to remotely participate in the August 12th, 2021 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
Right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Claffey.
Second that.
Right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Pursuant to Stanton City Council procedural memorandum number three, we have allowed the motion to pass. I now ask if Councilor Mead would please give her location.
342 Sherwood Avenue, Stanton.
All right, thank you. Could everyone in the audience as well as the council members here, Ms. Mead?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, welcome, Councilor Mead. All right. The first item on the agenda is a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Claffey.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the work session agenda and regular meeting agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oakes.
Councilor Darby.
I second that.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mayor Oakes.
Hi.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is item number two, a discussion of letter of support of COPN request number VA 8582 Augusta Health for additional general purpose operating room. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Leslie Beauregard, the city's assistant city manager, will introduce this item.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. On July 21st, 2021, Mayor Oakes received a request from Augusta Health to sign a letter of support in connection with their application to the Virginia Department of Health for a certificate of public need for an additional general purpose operating room. This is pretty, under a fairly tight timeframe, so we're asking council to not only discuss, we're going to introduce the item, discuss it, but also consider it at the regular agenda as well. Mr. Mark LaRosa is here, he's at the podium. He's the vice president of business development and chief strategy officer, I hope I got that right?
Yes.
With Augusta Health, and I'll ask Mr. LaRosa to please do a short presentation and answer any questions that city council might have.
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you and good evening. Mayor Oakes, Vice Mayor Robertson, and Stanton City Council members, thank you for the opportunity to tell you about Augusta Health's need for an additional operating room. In the certificate of need process we entered into on August 2nd, Augusta Health is respectfully requesting a letter of support from Mayor Oakes to accompany our COPN application for one additional operating room, which is currently before the Virginia Department of Health Office of Licenseur and Certificate Certification. Augusta Health is an independent, community-owned, non-for-profit hospital whose mission is to promote the health and well-being of its community through access to excellent care. Augusta Health provides access to care for residents of the Planning District Six, including Stanton, Waynesboro, Augusta County, and some surrounding counties. Today Augusta Health currently operates with 11 operating rooms, six endoscopy, pain, and special procedure rooms, and one cystoscopy room, which includes special procedures such as general surgery, ENT, breast surgery, GI and endoscopy, gynecology, neurosurgery, ophthalmology, oral maxillofacial surgery, orthopedics, pain management, plastics, robotics, thoracic, urology, and vascular surgery. From 2019, from 2017 to 2019, Augusta Health's demand for surgical capacity grew from 97, 95% to 97% to what is projected to be 109% in 2021 of the state medical facility's capacity threshold of 1,600 hours per OR per year. And let me just pause and explain that. The state has a threshold where they start to look for the rationale and the need for an additional operating room. They set that and they say they want each of your operating rooms to operate an average of 1,600 hours per year. To put that in perspective, five hour, or eight hours per day in a five-hour week, a typical week, is 2,080 hours per year. So that's about 76% of a typical workday year. The state recognizes that not every operating room operates at the full time that you're open. And so when it talks about the percentage of capacity, it's talking about their threshold, not necessarily the number of hours in a day. And so I just wanted to clarify that. The demand for expanded surgical capacity is expected to continue to increase as the new practices grow. And in 2021, we hired one spine surgeon, two orthopedic surgeons, one urologist, one breast surgeon, one ophthalmologist, and one gynecologist. And then we've recruited another group of surgeons that will be coming in the next 12 months, including one gynecologist, one orthopedic surgeon, one ENT surgeon, and one urologist. And we're just thrilled that they want to come and be a part of our community. Also Augusta, and excuse me, expanded OR capacity is also needed to accommodate a higher volume of complex cases and lengthier surgical procedures. Through its surgeon recruitment efforts, Augusta Health has successfully expanded subspecialty surgery offerings. The volume of more complex spine, oncology, vascular, interventional radiology procedures has grown at Augusta Health. And the impact has been that our average length of OR case has gone from 79 minutes to 88 minutes between 2017 and 2021. That's nine minutes per case, but when you multiply that times 4,000 cases that you have per year, that on the inpatient side, and then another 16,000 cases that you have on the outpatient side, that begins to add up pretty significantly. Along with Augusta Health's aggressive recruitment efforts, the aging population of the area Augusta Health serves will also continue an increased demand for surgical services. The age 65 population in Augusta Health Stanton and Waynesboro is expected to increase from 21 to 23% of the total population by 2023. Augusta Health proposes to meet this institutional need for expanded operating room capacity through the conversion of an existing procedure room. So we have a procedure room in the suite with the operating rooms. All we need to do is convert it to an operating room. It's already in a sterile area. Very little renovation and construction will be required to convert this procedure room to an OR. The estimated renovation cost and equipment is approximately $1 million. It will require the recruitment of nine staff, six nurses, two surgical technicians, and one surgical assistant. Though we anticipate the new OR can be ready a couple months after the state would approve us. In summary, Augusta Health is striving to have the access it needs for surgical cases so patients can receive their care they need in the community. Thank you for hearing our request, and we respectfully submit our request for a letter of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions, my council members?
Mayor Oakes is Brenda Mead.
Councilor Mead.
Yeah, I wonder if you could tell me, we had this situation last year where you were in competition with Centerra for facilities with a certificate of COPN, I guess, is that right?
Yes.
Anyway, are you in a similar situation this year? Has Centerra also applied for a certificate of need for additional operating room capacity?
Thank you for the question. It's a great question. No, we are not in the same situation as we were last year. Actually, we are the only ones in this application process right now for a certificate of need for one additional operating room.
Thank you.
All right. Councilor Claffey.
Does the robotic procedure require a different operating room? And have you, since you've gone to robotic surgery, I know, is that cutting down on the? Yeah. Yeah. Does that cut down on the amount of available space you have in your normal rooms, or?
It's a great question. And actually, we've thought about that when we built and that we're designing the new outpatient pavilion. It requires a bigger operating room. Our operating rooms, though, that we have today fit the robots that we have. We have some larger ones and smaller ones, and obviously, we put it in the larger ones that we have today. But it's a great question because as technology changes and there's more robotics, we have to think about having the space for those in the rooms. Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilor Dole.
It's more of a comment. Although my plan is to never use that OR, I will support it, since I have supported Augusta Health since 2006, being on city council, because I think it's really important to have an independent, nonprofit, local, community hospital, and all the good things that accrue with that. So I'm happy to hear, and even though I don't want to use it.
Well, we appreciate your support over the years. Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Do council members see a need for Mr. LaRosa to remain for the regular meeting?
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for presenting.
Yes.
All right, the next item is item number three, a discussion of establishment of council-appointed commission of equity and diversity. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, this item is on your work session agenda at the request of council member Brenda Mead, and I'd like to invite her to make whatever comments she has concerning the subject.
Councilor Mead.
Ms. Mead, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Out of practice with Zoom meetings, I guess. So about a year ago, in fact, it'll, in a couple weeks, it will be a year, citizens representing the Stanton Equity Coalition came for city council to make a case for the establishment of a committee on equity, achievement, and opportunity. And in that presentation, they provided statistics on racial gaps in housing, arrests, city employment, racial makeup of city management, and gaps in education. And recently, members of the Stanton chapter of the NAACP and the Stanton Equity Coalition have asked that I bring this matter forward again. And I'm hoping that members of the NAACP, Amy, Dr. Amy Tillerson Brown, and Ms. Cookie Johnson are in the room.
They are.
Excellent. And so, well, please welcome them to the podium.
Yes, absolutely. Dr. Amy Tillerson Brown and Ms. Rebecca Cookie Johnson, if you would like to present at the podium, we would love to hear from you.
Good afternoon. Good evening, everybody.
Yeah, good evening.
Yeah, thank you all. So we're glad to, glad to be here and speaking with you all today. So happy, excuse me, to have received an email, this is kind of off topic, but not really, about your approval of a committee to study the history of the Black business districts here in Stanton. So thank you so much for your willingness to do that, and I hope that it proves fruitful. Within that same vein, however, as Councilwoman Mead just said, building on the work of the Stanton Equity Commission from about a year or so ago, we're hoping, we see overlaps with what you're already doing in that, in that area, and what is still kind of yet to come. And without really rehashing all of the work that the Stanton Equity Commission did, where they were able to point out disparities in housing, in hiring, right, in opportunity gaps even with schools, arrest records, and wages, and even what we see in terms of distribution in city executive positions by race, we were hoping that, and you all would consider, forming an equity or a diversity commission that might work together on more of these diverse, inclusive, and equitable needs, one of which we hope might, you might find helpful, or that we hope that you all will investigate, is the potential hiring of a chief diversity officer on executive staff that could oversee diversity and equity issues for the entire city. We hope that the office could have a staff with the reporting hierarchy that would allow for real equity work to continue or to take place in this fine city. We also hope with that umbrella being set up that we would see additional qualified Black people being hired in city, Black, Indigenous, people of color being hired in city positions, and also work to lessen the pay gap between the city administration and the support staff. We see those as equity issues that we hope an equity commission, diversity and equity commission could study further and continue to bring good things through the city in the realm of inclusion, diversity, and equity.
Right. Are there any questions, my council members? Councilor Dole.
Just a comment that kind of ties into this topic. In our retreat, we have one specific item in there that addresses the wish that to have our city employees mirror the community. So it's a start, anyway.
Thank you, Councilwoman Della. That's what we were, the research that Councilwoman Mead was just talking about kind of pointed out, right? When you're looking at the statistics of people of color in the community and their representation in hiring, and then the pay gap that exists there also, we were hoping that, you know, we could take more time with the formation of a commission to get at some of those issues that sometimes people really just don't pay much attention to. But the formation of a commission like this could really be helpful in showing us what we don't see, right? Showing us what we, what we don't know, we don't know, right? And hopefully, you all could consider that seriously as you move forward.
This is Brenda Mead.
Yes, for me.
I'd just like to add a couple of comments in support of forming this commission. Last year, in the discussion that followed, the presentation that was made by the Equity Coalition, a number of items were proposed by members of council that council could receive a presentation from John Venn, Director of Human Resources, to answer questions, or that council needed to have a discussion regarding how to get more diverse applications, or that council needed to get money for the pre-K program going, and that council speak with the school board and school system and investigate further some of the issues, in particular with respect to our schools. None of those actions have been taken by council to move on those steps since that meeting a year ago. In that year, other issues have come up with respect to diversity and inclusion. Members of the Black community have been frustrated with the response to their issues, and for a period of months, senior citizens and the disabled, to broaden the perspective a bit, felt that their voices were not welcome at city council meetings. And again, as Carolyn just stated, among the top 10 priorities that were identified in the recent survey of the community on their priorities for city council, one was that we advance diversity of race, sexual orientation, and disability in a way that makes those groups feel they're truly welcome in Stanton. This is, this is not something we can address with a slogan, and it can't be addressed with a senior staff course on understanding concepts of racism, and sexism, and ageism, and ableism. I think concrete action is what will demonstrate that this, this city council's commitment to diversity and inclusion at this point. And I think it's time to push the reset button and take some action to demonstrate that this council values diversity and inclusion in the way we govern. And so I would like to make a motion.
What is your motion, Councilor Mead?
I move that city council move forward immediately with the establishment of a citizen commission on equity and inclusion, and I'm happy to be the council liaison to that commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will happily second that.
All right. Our city attorney would like to chime in.
Can we do that during the work session?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, this, this is a work session, so I think this would need to go on the regular agenda for that item. You could certainly make a motion to amend the regular session agenda to add it at that time.
Councilor Mead, would you like to restructure your motion to have it put on the regular meeting agenda?
Yes. Do I make that motion now?
All right.
Or at the beginning of the regular meeting?
I would make it now.
All right. I would like to make a motion that this item be moved to the regular meeting agenda.
Great. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second by Councilor Dole. Any further discussion?
So with what, what item number?
So that'll make it item number?
Yeah.
F.
F, as in Frank.
Yeah.
So I would just like to make a comment. I think the establishment of this commission, along with the ad hoc committee, is a great idea. I fully support it, and I think it's a step in the right direction.
I do too, and thank you all so much for that. So during the work session, you all think then that you would be establishing a commission?
We will certainly vote on it.
You'll vote on it in the next meeting. So thank you so much. Thank you. Mayor Oakes, is it necessary, does council feel it's necessary for Ms. Tillerson Brown to be present in the regular meeting, since this is putting, we're putting this on the, on the, at the end of the meeting?
If you would like to stay, you can, but if you would like to go on home, feel free.
Well, I want to be here if there, I didn't want to make this a lecture, you know, sometimes, you know, historians can get really long-winded, right? So I, but I do have the data from what the Stanton Equity Commission did prior to that Councilwoman Mead was speaking of, but I don't know that you need me to do that because you all heard the presentation yourselves.
Yes.
I'm happy for, to hear that you all are encouraged about making this step, because I agree wholeheartedly with Councilwoman Mead and others, and all of you, I believe you agree too, that if we're going to make change, we have to take action. And it's not always comfortable, and it's not always easy, but I really appreciate the try, and I want to help you as much as I can, help us to become a better city, yes.
Thank you. And Councilor Mead, Councilor Mead, would you be willing to answer any questions if there are any council members during the regular meeting?
I hope I can.
Okay, all right.
If I could just ask, could we, could we add it before A to make it more convenient? I mean, is there, is there any problem with that?
No, that's, that's at the council's prerogative.
Can we, can we flip?
You could flip.
A and F?
Certainly.
Okay.
Well, but.
But the motion, does the motion say F?
Instead of flipping them.
Okay.
Item A presently is a public hearing.
Okay.
And so you'll have people perhaps come to participate in the public hearing. I don't think you want to put it at the end. So I think that if you, if, if the, if the motion is simply to insert this item as item A and to re-letter every other item in order as B through, as B through F.
Okay.
Then you can vote on, on that motion.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Robertson has one question.
No, 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 another question. I was just going to say, we love having you, or you can go home, be with your son, and watch the Yankees in Detroit on the Field of Dreams.
He told me to tell you that he's quarterbacking now, not baseball, so.
Blue Dawn.
Have we not voted?
Not yet.
Yes, if there are motion to make this item B on the regular session agenda, and then re-number, re-letter the remaining items to follow subsequently.
Councilor Dole, is that your? And Councilor Dole, is that your motion?
I didn't make the motion.
I think I made, did I make the motion?
We voted to, I'll put it on the regular agenda. Now we're voting to make it item B.
To re-letter.
Yes.
Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
We're voting to make it item A and then re-letter the remaining items on the agenda, is that correct?
No, it's to make it item B, Councilor Mead, because item A is a public hearing.
And isn't item B a public hearing as well?
It should be. Let's see. Yes, it is.
So may I suggest the motion be to make, to make it item C and to re-letter the remaining items?
Okay. Mayor Oaks?
Councilor Mead.
Yes, I move to insert the item as item C and to renumber the remaining items as items D, E, and F.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? All right, we have a second by Councilor Dole. Any further discussion? Hearing done, Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. You're on the regular meeting agenda.
Who knows where?
Thank you. All right, so the next item is item number four, a discussion of resolution of intent to amend Chapter 18.120, yard building setback and open space extensions subsection 18.120.0104 F of Title 18.
Mouthful. Say that again.
I don't have my glasses. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor Rodney Rhodes, the city senior planner, will present this item. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Blair, the city attorney, will present this item. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Blair, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Oaks.
Good evening.
And council. Before you tonight, if you recall, at your last regular council meeting, there was a proposal concerning a zoning text amendment that would have allowed for, I will use for lack of a better term, a landlocked lot within the city that did not meet the street frontage requirements, could have received a, and if they could have received an easement of 10 feet in width or greater that fronted a public street, and they could use that easement to access the public street, the zoning text amendment at the previous council meeting would have allowed for development on that landlocked lot. Tonight before you, as you may recall, that proposed amendment did not pass, and after that meeting, Counselor Claffey gave me a phone call, and he expressed that his concern about that was, I believe it was, Mr. Darby spoke at the public hearing and brought up the concern, well, couldn't lots beyond the lot that obtained the easement, I think he used the phrase daisy chain, and so I think, you know, the idea that four, five, six lots back could use the same easement to meet the street frontage requirement. And he asked me, you know, are there ways you could limit that? And so before you tonight, and for discussion, is a proposed amendment to that zoning text amendment, which states that one lot may use a 10-foot easement in width for its street frontage requirements. However, that lot would be limited to the development of one single-family dwelling. That would, you know, per the lots as they exist, that would allow for development of a single-family dwelling on those lots. Now, what I want to convey is this is substantively different than what was before you last It is also worth noting, though, and Mr. Rhodes is in the audience, but he and I have talked, one thing the council needs to keep in mind with this amendment, if you want to refer it to the planning commission and it comes back, is that lot lines can be adjusted through a minor subdivision amendment. And so what I want to convey to you is, as written, this allows for the development of one single-family lot. No other lots can use that easement for their street frontage requirement if they're landlocked. But it is also worth noting, if you get questions about specific pieces of property, nobody can ultimately give definitive answers, you know, does this forever preclude something? And the reason for that is properties can be bought, properties can be combined, properties could be subdivided. There are all sorts of creative things a developer can do that, you know, we can't even conceive, you know? Without a plat before us, we can't conceive of what a developer could or couldn't do. So I only say that because the zoning text amendment, as Mr. Claffey asked me to draft it before you, would limit all landlocked lots to one single-family development if they could get that 10-foot width easement. However, again, I would caution that answering questions about specific pieces of property, and I know that there were some folks from Powhatan Street at the last public hearing, but this applies citywide. You can certainly always answer, as written, that's how this works, but it is worth noting that, you know, when you get asked, well, does this forever preclude X from being developed? I would be very cautious in ever giving a yes or no answer, because we just don't know how developers can combine lots, change lot lines, whatever creative ideas they might have. And so that's, that's the gist, but I'm happy to take questions, and I don't know if Counselor Claffey, if you had any questions or comments you wanted to make.
Thanks, Mayor Robertson.
Let me, let me ask you, because I took a trip up there today and talked to several, several property owners, and actually walked, I just wanted to see it myself. And as I understand, what you're saying is that that piece of property will allow one single-family house on it. As I understand, he tore down a single-family house. So in essence, it's a single-family house for a single-family house. Am I, am I being too simplistic, or?
Well, and, and I don't know if Rodney can also come, Mr. Rhodes can come up here, but it's my understanding you have currently three lots.
Right.
One has a home on it that has the required street frontage. There are two lots behind that parcel that do not have the required street frontage. If each of those lots obtained a 10-foot in width easement across that parcel that has the street frontage, and they would have to be two separate easements, they couldn't use the same easement per this amendment, each lot could develop one single-family home based on the current zoning and this, and this text amendment, but.
Well, and I will say that I understand that, that would mean one additional house, because I talked to a gentleman, and there was actually two, there was a farmhouse, and then there was a smaller 400 to 500 square foot home right beyond and to the left of where that farmhouse was. So that would be two, and now you're, so you're talking one, two, three. Is that correct, Rodney? If that's what we're talking about?
Yes, sir, it would be a total of three houses. I am familiar with the old farmhouse, whatever, that received a demolition permit. There was another small structure that was torn down. I wasn't positive that that was a dwelling.
Yeah. Yeah, the gentleman said, he said somebody could have lived there, or it could have been maybe used for storage, that that's what.
I believe it had separate utilities, so it could, could have been a house, yes, sir.
Because as I walked, there's actually, I reckon, kind of where that road comes up, then there's a big dip in there, and then you can actually see where there's, it appears to be two water lines, and then a larger, like a four-inch pipe that have been capped, that are just opening a hole down there. So, okay.
Councilor Claffey?
No, I think the intent of this is to open it up for the whole city, and there's landlocked lots around the city. We do not know how many. And I guess we're trying to make a policy that's going to be applicable for all cities, not just the Powhatan. This is not being done exclusively for the Powhatan address. This is being done, you know, so that landlocked lots have a future that does not require them to come to the planning commission and get a variance every time. There will be an actual piece of legislation that will tell them what is required in order for them to have access and build a single-family home.
Correct. If enacted, this zoning text amendment would not require a variance to be granted for landlocked parcels. If, assuming that they can get the landowners, you know, easement, approval for an easement, purchase it however they do it for the pub, for the street frontage.
This is Brenda Mead.
Councilor Mead.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Claffey for having been proactive about pursuing a reasonable solution on this. And then I would also like to say that I think a good principle of developing housing in a city is to use contiguous residential lots, use infill as really a, an important way to increase housing in a community, as opposed to putting housing on the outskirts that requires new water and sewage and that sort of thing. So I think these, this is an opportunity for the city to build new housing in ways that are very healthy for the city.
All right. Are there any additional? Councilor Dole?
So, Mr. Blair, you're saying, when we're asked a question about, will this never change, or you never, I guess that our correct response would be yes, only in terms of death and taxes.
That is very correct. I, and I've always counseled clients, not just the city council. I mean, it's just never a good idea to give definitive answers about what can and can't be done with a piece of property, because you'd never know a combination of lots or whatever to get to ultimately meet those requirements. And so it's, it's just a great idea. Death and taxes are permanent.
Any additional questions or comments?
Are we going to proceed to put this on the agenda?
I think we have a question, but one second. Vice Mayor Robertson?
There was another concern that had a couple of the, a couple of citizens that I talked to, and, and maybe I need to get Mr. Johnston in this as well, and, because I don't know, but they said that they felt like sometimes the water pressure was not as high as they'd like it to be there, and they were concerned that if we did add additional homes, that that would further reduce that pressure. Jeff, is that, is that a true case?
That's about Powhatan.
Well, that's Powhatan, and that, oh, what is the name going up beside it now? I can't think of it, anyway.
Ramsey.
Ramsey, yeah. I mean, is that, is that a true case, or is that something that if, if there was an issue, that it could be possibly increased pressure? I just.
First of all, after the last, the council meeting, we did go out and take a look at the system out there. We actually have pressure-reducing valves in that part of town because of the high ambient pressure. So the combination of those valves would allow us to make some adjustments. I mean, and, you know, the water system is just that, a system. So as you add things, there will be changes. But at this point, again, based on that sort of cursory examination, we didn't see anything that was going to be a showstopper.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So what is council's pleasure? Would you like to see this move forward to the Stanton Planning Commission?
Is that our next logical step?
Yes, that would be your next logical step. Would that be on next?
If I may, Madam Mayor, what you have in the materials is a resolution to refer it to the planning commission, and if council desires, that resolution could be included on your regular meeting agenda for the next meeting. So you would vote on the resolution referring it to the planning commission at the, and you would take that vote at your next meeting.
Okay, so we don't have to mess with the letters for the regular meeting agenda again. Okay, all right. Sounds good.
So I think if we can just see a sense on the part of council members without a formal vote now, if you would like to see it included on that regular meeting agenda, we can make that arrangement.
What is your pleasure?
That would be a good thing.
Councilor Dole?
Clarification, is it possible to go ahead and vote, to have the resolution, go ahead and vote for that, or how, what are we voting?
If you wanted to put it on the regular meeting agenda for this evening's meeting, you could, you could amend the agenda yet again to add item G.
Let's do it. Save two weeks, whatever.
All right, so is that council's pleasure to go ahead and vote on it this evening?
To me, it seems like a, just.
Saves us two weeks.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion to?
Well, you now have F, so I guess this would be G.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Claffey.
I move that we add to the regular meeting agenda tonight as item G, a discussion, a vote on the proclamation of the resolution.
To send it to?
To send it to the planning council.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is that a motion, okay?
This, this resolution before you will be item G on your business meeting.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second by Counselor Darby. Any further discussion? Hearing done, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
That short me is getting longer.
And with that, we are on break. We will be back at 7:30 for the regular meeting.
I would like to call the regular meeting for the Stanton City Council for August 12, 2021 to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to join me with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. The next item is the invocation. Moment of silence. And tonight, it's Councillor Dole's turn.
Thank you. I'd like to mention a couple of things. And the first thing I want to read is the Governor Northam's statement on the fourth anniversary of violence in Charlottesville. This is excerpts from the full release. Governor Ralph Northam today released the following statement marking the four-year anniversary of the deadly violence in Charlottesville. Four years ago, white nationalist violence erupted in Charlottesville and resulted in the deaths of Heather Heyer, Lieutenant J. Cullen, and Trooper Pilot Burke Bates. Together today, we pause to honor them and all the lives forever changed that day. Sadly, white nationalist violence has increased since then, and we continue to grapple with the realities and impacts of systemic racism, even as some pretend it does not exist. These past four years have also seen great progress. Across the Commonwealth, monuments to white supremacy have come down, including in Charlottesville just last month. Protests for racial justice continue to lead to real and lasting change. These are reasons for hope. There are more people who want justice and healing, fairness and equality, than those who want to hide history and promote hate. We have much work to do, and I have faith that we will have the will to ensure that hate has no home in Virginia. So I'd like for us to remember those folks who were killed and injured in that violence. And I know, in my mind, I'm convinced that most of those people weren't from Charlottesville. They were, they were brought in from other areas. And the other thing, for a moment of silence, I'd like for us to reflect on the innocent lives that are going to be lost, that are being lost as we speak from the Delta variant. And that we can only hope that our. That wasn't me. I could, let us hope that those who are unvaccinated will realize that they're, that we need their compassion and their care to help make our children safe and our communities safe. So if we'll have a moment for both of those items, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next item is the mayor's report. The first item.
I beg your pardon, Mayor Oaks. This is Brenda Mead. I just want everyone to be aware that the work session broadcast is continuing, is continuing and is continuing over the current meeting.
All right. Thank you, Councillor Mead.
Yeah.
Mrs. Zinni, are you able to stop it for us? We will pause for a technical issue.
Where's Kurt?
I think he left it in Rachel's hand. One time Kurt's not here.
I know. Brenda, you still getting it?
No, I'm not. I'm not getting the work session broadcast anymore.
I think we're good. All right. Thank you. All right. The next item is the mayor's report. The first item I would like to read to you is sponsored by the West End Business Association. The West End Road Rally and Scavenger Hunt, starting at the Gypsy Hill Park Bandstand. The West End Road Rally and Scavenger Hunt is Saturday, August 21, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., starting at the Gypsy Hill Park Bandstand. Participants will receive a passport and a map at the bandstand. From there, participants will visit businesses around the Stanton's West End. There will be family activities, goodies, and giveaways at each business. At the end of the event, participants will be asked to return their passports to the Gypsy Hill Park Bandstand, where winners will be announced. There will also be live music and refreshments after the scavenger hunt. For more information on this event, you can find it on Facebook by searching West End Road Rally and Scavenger Hunt. You can also contact Tanya Savinsky at 885-8839. If someone answers State Farm, just ask for Tanya. And it's my understanding that our very own Mr. Billy Vaughn will be the MC. Billy, you're the MC?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So you are the superstar of the day. All right. Well, sounds like a lot of fun. Oh, except handing out your autograph. All right. The next item is the retreat. The city council had a retreat the past two days. I believe it was a success. We all worked together on the vision statement, the goals and priorities for the city of Stanton. We also worked on principles for the city council as a whole. And I would like to thank all of the citizens that participated in the survey that was put out there, because the results of the survey is what truly helped guide us when we were at the retreat, working hard. I'd also like to mention that there, this past week, we had the unveiling. The Stanton Sheriff's Department had the unveiling of the Drug Dropbox. And today, I went by the Stanton Sheriff's Department to wish Liberty, our little K-9 puppy, good wishes, because tomorrow she is leaving for K-9 Boot Camp. So she will, yeah, five months she'll be gone. She's going to leave a puppy and come back a K-9 deputy dog. All right. Are there any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Councillor Mead.
Yeah, just a couple of things from me. On Thursday, August 5, as an alumni of the 2007 class of LEED Virginia, I welcomed over 50 members of the class of 2021 to Stanton. And I want to add that the other distinguished member of the class of 2007 was our own city manager, Steve Rosenberg, which is where I met Steve for the first time way back in 2007. He looked different than he does today, I just want to add, but I won't go any further than that. So just to explain, LEED Virginia is a nonprofit and nonpartisan organization. Its participants travel to each of several distinct regions of the Commonwealth. The program is designed to give leaders a deeper understanding of the issues and opportunities facing all of Virginia by understanding each region's responses to the issues of economy, education, and health. And this group of nearly 60 attendees, which included staff, spent two nights at the Hotel 24 South and Frederick House Hotels. They visited the Innovation Hub. They got an economic update from our regional economic partners, and they very much enjoyed Stanton's hospitality. I calculate that it must have been $10,000 worth of hotel room revenue. So I'm pleased to be, to continue to be part of the program committee for LEED Virginia and to ensure that they come back to Stanton every year. The other item I'd like to add is that the good news for folks in this room, especially those who are concerned about population growth in Stanton, is that the Virginia Public Access Project just published their preliminary summary of the 2020 consensus. This newly released data shows how populations of Virginia's cities and counties have changed in the past decade. And while the state grew as a whole, 62 of Virginia's 133 localities lost residents in the past 10 years. Those localities, cities and counties and towns are primarily in the southwest and southside regions. In this, in the Stanton, Waynesboro, Augusta area, more good news, or good news, Augusta County grew about 5%. That's roughly 3,700 people. Waynesboro grew about 5.5%, and that's about 1,200 people. The city of Stanton, wait for it, drumroll, grew nearly 8.5% or over 2,000 people in the last decade. So I thought that was great news, and I wanted to share.
All right. Thank you. Are there any additional items by members of council? Madam Mayor. Vice Mayor Robertson?
Several things. I too was very honored to participate during the Stanton City Sheriff's ribbon-cutting of the Drug Takeback Program. I can't stress how much, what an important part this is to the city of Stanton. Also, as a member of the Drug Court, this is an effort to get, you know, get unused prescription bottles and drugs off, out of drug or, you know, out of the bathrooms and that type of thing. And or, you know, grandma might have some leftover, and grandchildren can, well, I'll just try this. It's such a type of thing where people, young people and even older, can, can get started on something that, because they say, let's see what this is like. And it's a really great effort, totally anonymous. You just walk in. It's basically an old mailbox that's been changed over, and you open it up, put the medicine in, and close the door. And so it's a great way to try to get unused drugs out of circulation. And I think soon, as I understand, soon as the drug was put out on the Stanton News Leader, a couple of people called up and said, I've got a whole box. Can I bring them down? Absolutely, absolutely. Take it there. It's open five days a week if the court building is open. Go in there unless there's no questions asked. So I really stressed that. The other thing that I was truly, truly honored to do is on August 1, I was honored to do a ride-along with our Public Works guys. And Jeff Johnston, the director, kind of got me set up and shepherded me along the way. Started out early that Monday morning at 6:30. We went downtown and picked up the bollards and got those off after a weekend of dine-out downtown. And it's amazing. Jeff told me when that first started, it took up pro, two, a little over two hours to get that done. Those guys have now, they've created their own truck where they can get these things, and these, pick them up and put them on, they can get it done in about 26 minutes now, from start to finish. So I did that, and I will tell you, those, this old man, them bollards are heavy. Then went and got to climb on, climb on a trash truck and went with, I think it was Ethan, Jahar, and Roger was the driver. And we talked a lot, and I was fortunate enough to get out and sling a few bags and pick up, try, try to pick up a few trash cans. And I had to get Ethan to help me, because they are heavier than, you can imagine, trying to lift them into that. Also got to go to the water, the water building, and they did an amazing job. Seth took me from basically point A to point B and told us about the unbelievable quality water that our Public Works provides us. We have great people there 24/7. And what really makes it great is that Stanton is blessed to have great sources of water to begin with. And then Jeff took me down to the new public, I mean, the new recycling center. And that's exciting. We, I think Jeff was worried that we might have a big spike in the beginning and then trail off. That hasn't happened yet. People are really showing up, and they're starting to learn, you know, what, what can be put in there and what can't. And what's really important when you're collecting the plastic is, you wouldn't think so. There's, you know, number one, clear and kind of awful bit green, but you get one dark green piece in there, and the whole thing gets to be thrown out. That's just why that it has to be, have somebody there checking it. So I just can't, I want to tell Jeff, and I want, hopefully he takes to those guys, what an experience that was for me. And I, because I want them to know that I do care, and I think we all do here on council. We care what our Public Works guys and gals do for us. They're a great bunch of people. And, and I wanted to know what they go through. And I put it out there, any of our people that want to do it, try it out, because they're, I mean, they work. They work hard, and I'm really, I'm proud of them. Really am. So thank you.
So folks, if your trash cans are cracked, it's Vice Mayor Robertson's fault.
Yeah, and I'm going to pass on the trash collecting.
Mayor Oaks? Councillor Darby?
I would just like to say, you know, we're at the beginning of a new school year, so I'd like to extend well wishes to our Stanton City Schools, to our students, families, teachers, administrators. They all work really hard, and I think we have a great school system, and just wish them well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Dole?
I would just like to add that I've gotten no reports of my grandson being suspended or anything yet. So I'd say it's going well.
Two days.
I'll take a day at a time.
All right. The next item is the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion for the work session and regular meeting minutes of July 22, 2021.
Mayor Oaks?
Councillor Mead.
I move to approve the minutes of the work session and regular meeting agendas of July 22, 2021.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Councillor Dole? Okay. Councillor Dole has second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done. Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Mead? Could you unmute for me, please, Ms. Mead?
I beg your pardon. Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next item on the regular meeting agenda is, A, a public hearing in consideration of a request by Jonathan Robert Goff to rezone 814 North Augusta Street from B1 Local Business District to R2 Low Density Residential District. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor Rodney Rhodes, the city senior planner, will present this item.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Oaks, for introducing this item in public hearing. As you noted, that this is a request to actually downzone the property from B1 Local Business to R2 Low Density Residential. 814 North Augusta is considered a legal non-conforming property in that it is a dwelling and has been for 80 or 90 years. However, since the city rewrote the zoning ordinance and updated the zoning maps in 1969, it has been designated as B1 Business. Back then, the city used a consulting firm out of Chicago, and I'm sure they did the best job when they proposed these maps. But they, the thought was, these major roads coming into downtown would eventually all be commercial, you know, North Augusta, West Beverly, and so on, Greenville. Although the use at that time certainly was not business for a lot of these properties, and in many cases, they have not converted over to commercial, such as this one. The city has undertaken an initiative to do mass rezonings. And the last one in this area on this street was in 2017. I'm guessing probably about 40 properties were rezoned from commercial to either residential or professional. However, this particular parcel was not included in that because of close proximity to actual commercial businesses. It's, I believe, across the street from a funeral home, and two doors down on both sides are commercial operations. So that this. down on both sides are commercial operations. So that, this, that's why this one was not considered in that mass rezoning. The new owner who bought this property just last year would now like to continue to use it as a dwelling and as property owners, you know, like to do, they like to make some small improvements. He wants to add a deck and I think a gazebo. Unfortunately, with it being a nonconforming property, you cannot expand a nonconforming use on the property. Therefore, he is seeking this rezoning. Staff does not see any issues with this request. As far as the comprehensive plan designates this as professional. However, the low density residential zoning is better suited for the current use of the property and is also more consistent with the surrounding residential zoning. Plan Commission conducted a public hearing on this on July 15th, and there were no one to speak in opposition to the request. And on a 4 to 0 vote, they unanimously voted to recommend approval of this rezoning. I'd be glad to take any questions you, you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Rhodes? All right.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I, I'm going to turn to Mr. Blair here to back me up on this. But before you move forward with the public hearing, I, I believe it's appropriate for you to invite the applicant to, to offer any statement or information that he wishes to share with council.
We would love to. Oh, there you are. Hi, welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Yes, my fiance and I bought the house on December 17th. We both grew up in Nelson County. So we're glad to be close to home, but in a, you know, a small city. Yeah, we just want an opportunity, opportunity to improve the house, to add a deck and a fence and several other things in the backyard. Had no idea it was owned as commercial. I believe it was actually vacant for 30 years before it was remodeled. So that may also explain there may, I don't think there was any response in 2017 during the zoning process. I don't really have any more details than that, but I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did council have any questions? Thank you. Well, since we're having a public hearing on this, I will need to read the public hearing procedure. In a moment, I will open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during this public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during the council's meeting for other public hearings as well as matters from the public. Please keep your comments to five minutes as well. Once everyone that wishes to speak has had an opportunity, I will then close the public hearing. I will know. Sorry, there's a typo. I will now open the public hearing. So if you wish to speak, please approach the podium. I will alternate between individuals physically present and those that have their hands raised via the Zoom platform. All right. The public hearing is now open. If you would like to speak concerning this matter, whether for or against it, please come to the podium. Hey, welcome.
Hello. My name is Albino Albert Fossa. I live at 401 Bowling Street in Stanton. I'm a former physicist, mathematician, and chemist with extensive backgrounds. I was very pleased to hear that the residency in Stanton has increased by 8%, which is just fine. I see a lot of houses.
Mr. Fossa, would you like to speak on the issue that we're discussing now?
I think that it's a good idea to convert to residential property.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I believe that to be so. There are not, and I'd like to know how many new residential homes have been put into Stanton sometime.
All right. Thank you. All right. Ms. Zinni, do we have anyone on Zoom with their hand raised?
I do not have anyone with their hand raised.
All right. Would anyone else like to speak concerning this? Oh, welcome.
I'm Barbara Lee and I live on the most dangerous street, street in Stanton, Lambert and Rockway Street. And I have to admire this young man, excuse me, who wanted to come in and rehab a house. It's amazing. Now, he's gonna put a gazebo in the back of the house? Somewhere you want to put it?
The plan is to add a deck on the back of the house.
And we won't see it from the street, right? Give the man his permit. My God. We run people out of the city. That patio is not going to be seen. If you want to see a sight, you go up and look at them hedges up around that wall up on Augusta Street. Take care of that. But let this man have his deck.
Thanks. All right. Thank you. All right. One last time, Ms. Zinni, anyone?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised on Zoom.
Anyone from the audience? All right. Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed and I'll entertain a motion. Councillor Dole.
I move the council adopt the ordinance and approve the rezoning as recommended by the Planning Commission.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Councillor Darby?
Second.
Oh, me. I'm out of practice. All right. So we have a second by Councillor Darby. Any further discussion?
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Councillor Mead.
I just think this is another great example of an opportunity to increase residential housing in the city of Stanton. We, we need it desperately. I see comments on Facebook from not just my Facebook friends, but many, many other organizations in the city that people are having a difficult time finding a place to live in the city of Stanton. And if we're going to continue to grow our population, if we're going to continue to thrive as a city, then having housing like this is important to us and we need to support it.
Thank you. Councillor Claffey, would you like to, just having a little fun. All right. Hearing no other comments. Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right. Great. Thank you. Okay. The next item is a discussion and introduction and public hearing of ordinance to amend the FY 2022 budget ordinance for the city of Stanton by adding budget amendment number two. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Phil Trayer, the city's chief finance officer, will present this item.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's been six weeks. Good to be back.
Hope you've taken some time and go.
I did.
Been a while. We're out of practice here.
I am. Madam Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight we have budget amendment number two for FY 2022 before you. Budget amendment number two totals $4,831,774 and does require a public hearing, which was properly advertised and scheduled for this evening. The city portion of the amendment equals $194,995. The school portion, $4,636,779. Details been summarized in a packet and includes the following: $195,000 in general fund provisions, which includes $100,000 in carryforward fund appropriation for district layover work, $73,636 for the sheriff department to cover an additional deputy position ordered by the comp board to the city of Stanton. We have also included $18,000 in overtime wages to help support additional activity associated with jury tiles, trials, and $21,309 to appropriate ARPA grant via the Library of Virginia for computer equipment at the library. Slide three summarizes the school portion of the budget amendment, which again equals $4.6 million. The majority of this amount is associated with the appropriation of the school S3 funds. As a reminder, budget amendment number one, which was approved by council on July 22nd, 2021, was largely centered around the city's federal fund appropriation. At this time, the schools are asking for roughly 70% of their S3 allotment of $6.2 million. Requests for the remaining S3 funds are expected to occur in subsequent fiscal years. As can be seen on slide three, the education appropriation request equals $697,940. This includes $229,000 for school improvement leader positions at Ware Elementary, McLean Elementary, and Shelburne Middle. The next line item, 167804, is made up of $150,000 for website development. This website will be designed to be a central information and learning hub for the schools. They have $5,000 for a calming room at Shelburne Middle, $7,600 for water bottle filling stations at the middle and elementary schools, and $5,200 for miscellaneous supplies. Next, we have $32,311 for software licensing to support recently acquired technology hardware via the S1 funds. We have $40,000 in transportation wages for expanded summer school. We have $216,000 for instructional technology equipment via internal transfer from an undesigned CIP school line item. And we have $12,000 for equity fund, school library support, education supplies, and school garden development. The CIP portion of the school request equals $3,938,838, includes $3 million for school construction projects. The exact use of these funds will be determined in upcoming weeks as the school administration works with the joint committee to find an adequate location for the school's maintenance department. We have $45,500 to replace an HVAC chiller unit at Shelburne Middle, $829,000 for Promethean boards, $13,650 for an intercom system replacement at Betsy Weller Elementary, and finally, they have $50,474 in undesigned school CIP reserves. This will provide the schools with a limited amount of flexibility to address minor capital needs as they arise during the course of the fiscal year. And finally, item three is more of an accounting item. This is just a transfer between the funds, the CIP fund and the school operating fund. Slide four summarizes funding source of the city and school items discussed above. Start with the city's $195. Again, the district layover work, $100,000 is proposed to be funded by anticipated carryover funds from FY 2021. This project appeared in a budget amendment last year, but the procurement process extended into FY 2022. Because of this crossover, we are asking for a reappropriation of these funds to allow for a contract award to occur. This is not a doubling of the project. $73,636 to the sheriff department. That's going to be state funded. And the 21309 ARPA funds via the Library of Virginia is ultimately federal funding. The school side, $697,940 of that amount, $469,715 will be funded via the school's S3 funds, $216 from internal transfer, and $12,225 donations and grants. The school CIP of 3.9 is 100% funded via the school S3 funds, which is federal funds. Slide six is more of an update of a previous slide that we presented to council in June. As, as we all know, the schools have been awarded $6.2 million in federal funds to assist with the effects of COVID-19. Again, the funds must be obligated by September 30th, 2023, and spent by September 2024, although I am hearing this may change and, and become in alignment with the city's ARPA funds. But for now, these are the dates. To qualify, the schools must post a plan for a safe return to school. They've done that. And prior to finalizing the plan, they were to seek public comment, and that occurred on July 12, 2021. Slide seven, Stanton City Schools plan to utilize the S3 funds in two major areas, prevention and mitigation of the virus and learning loss, which is being addressed through academic interventions, student social and emotional learning support, and performance learning. Slide eight reviews the school's efforts in regards to prevention and mitigation with an emphasis on Shelburne Middle. Because of space limitations at the middle school, school administration has identified this school as their highest priority for prevention and mitigation. As such, a major portion of the S3 funds is projected to improve the learning spaces at Shelburne Middle. Proposed support increases, includes increasing classroom space and relocation school maintenance facility. This will free up additional classrooms with an emphasis on CTE. The HVAC boiler replacement complements S2 resources previously applied towards an air system upgrade at the school and of course, the installation of water bottle filling stations. Slide nine outlines proposed uses of the S3 funds for learning loss. As previously reported, as a condition of acceptance, Stanton City Schools are required to utilize at least 20% of their S3 proceeds on addressing learning loss. Stanton City Schools will exceed this ratio and plans to confront this issue with investment in evidence-based interventions to include comprehensive instructional program, CIP. This CIP is a consortium of public schools divisions in the state of Virginia working to improve student achievement as measured by the Virginia SOLs. School improvement leaders, expanded summer school program, expansion of clubs and after-school tutoring to reengage students and to assist with remediation, licenses for virtual Virginia and Apex online learning courses, RVR Spiro Q Robotics X. This will have a STEM emphasis with computers and robotics, RJE Restorative Justice Cohort. This expense will provide funding for educating teachers to be trained in field of conflict resolution and restorative justice between students. Sensory pathways at the preschool and elementary school. These expenses are designed to develop gross motor skills in young students. Replacement of library books in FY 2021, teacher grant applications for innovative learning process, and the calming room at Shelburne Middle School. This room will be used by the school to assist students in regulating their emotions. Slide 10 lists other uses of the S3 funds to address learning loss. They include the Promethean boards, as mentioned, an improved website, replacement of the Betsy Weller intercom system, and full-time floater positions, substitute floater positions. And with that, Madam Mayor, members of council, we are formally introducing budget amendment number two at this time, the amount of $4,831,774. This does require a public hearing. Again, that was properly advertised. The city portion again is $194,995. The school portion, $4,636,779. City manager recommends the introduction of this budget amendment as presented and for council to conduct the public hearing, which is scheduled for this evening. I'll be happy to field any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions by council members? Councillor Dole.
I'm forced to ask, what are Promethean boards?
Those are interactive, kind of, yeah. They're, they're, yeah, interactive education boards. Yeah.
This is Councilwoman Mead. I have a question.
Yes.
This might be a tough one for you, Mr. Trayer, but what is a calming room?
I, I am told that it, it is a room where students can go to assist in regulating their emotions.
I think I need one in my house.
I think we all do. Yes, ma'am.
We have missed you, Mr. Trayer. All right. So this is, this is a discussion, introduction, and public hearing. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to introduce an ordinance and conduct the public hearing.
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Councillor Mead.
I move to introduce an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by adding budget amendment number two totaling $4,831,774 and that council conduct the public hearing of the ordinance.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Robertson.
I will second that.
All right. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I am not going to read the public hearing procedures again. Just like before, if you would like to speak on this matter, come to the podium, state your name, your address. You have five minutes. And if you're on Zoom, if you can raise your hand. With that, the public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the public like to address council? Yes, sir.
My name is Albino Albert Fossa. I live at 401 Bowling Street. I would hope that you people will support education to its highest degree. Money should not be a factor when it comes to child's education. You should be having enough money and taxing enough people as long as you do it fairly and equitably. There should not be discrimination or racism. People need education. Unfortunately, what happens with education is you get a lot Unfortunately, what happens with education is you get a lot of people that are honest and so forth, but they don't know the difference between what is right and what is wrong, and will not do the right thing. And that's why there's a lot of problems with education. I would hope that there was a police that you have gotten around to getting rid of the police out of the schools. They don't belong there. There should be people who are educators, and they should be educated in terms of helping the students. There, when I went to school many years ago, I was incorrigible. I had a language problem. I could speak Italian very well, but I couldn't speak English. And a first-year teacher was useless, and a number of others along the way. So I would hope that the Stanton school system does something about that. I'm sure that there are children who have difficulty meeting the requirements that are set up or the standards that are set up by the school administration. So, and I would hope that you would approve all of this.
Thank you, Mr. Fossa. All right, is there anyone on Zoom?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised.
All right, anyone from the audience? Baldwin Jennings, you have competition. All right.
Barbara Lee.
Yes, ma'am, we have to record your lovely voice.
But, but, but I was looking at the budget report, and they said the maintenance. Has the city of Stanton or the school board ever thought of buying electric buses? We got some money coming from the president, I think that's what we should invest in, and not worry about a maintenance building. Just my thought.
Well, thank you. All right, one last chance for the folks on Zoom.
I do not have anyone with their hands raised.
All righty, with that, I will close the public hearing. All right, that takes us to item C, which is a consideration of establishment of council-appointed commission for equity and diversity. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor. This item was on your work session agenda for discussion. Um, and during the work session, you heard from council member Brenda Mead, as well as Dr. Amy Tillerson Brown, a representative of the Stanton branch of the N double A C P. Um, and the specific, uh, request being made uh, by the N double A C P is for council to establish a council-appointed commission for equity and diversity. Um, it was the, the, the decision of council by a vote, um, uh, during the work session to amend your regular meeting agenda to actually add this item to the agenda uh, for consideration at this evening's regular meeting. And I provided to each of you a proposed motion for your consideration. Ms. Mead may have, uh, uh, additional items that she would like to share with council members, but what I will share with council is that, you know, we don't, we don't have a framework for you to formally consider this evening. And so the motion, as it has been prepared, basically expresses an intention on the part of council to establish, um, such a commission. Uh, but there will be work for staff to do in concert with the city attorney to prepare a resolution that provides a structure to the commission, its composition, who's eligible for membership, um, you know, what, what qualifications there may be for membership on the commission, what specific tasks the commission is expected to perform and to report on to council. All of that detail, um, needs to be addressed more formally in a document that we would prepare for council to consider and, um, and provide feedback on, on a later date before formal establishment of, of the commission. And so the motion that you have before you contemplates that, that process and those steps. And with that, uh, I'd offer, um, Ms. Mead the opportunity to add any additional thoughts that she has.
Councilor Mead.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Rosenberg, I've read your, um, your suggested motion, and I, I would like to amend it slightly in that I would like that the motion to read that city council proceed with establishment of a council-appointed commission of equity, for equity and diversity, period. That staff will develop a resolution establishing such a commission to be discussed and considered by council at a later date. I, I don't want there to be a, um, uh, a, uh, if or when, I simply want council to proceed with establishment of a council-appointed commission for equity and diversity, and that, and that subsequently, staff will develop the resolution and, and, uh, and, uh, fill out the, um, the mission and objectives of the commission as you've described.
Mr. Rosenberg.
If, if, I think that's a suitable motion. If that's Ms. Mead's motion, and there's a second, I think it's appropriate for council to, to consider it.
Is that in a form of a motion, Councilor Mead?
Uh, yes, and if you need me to repeat it for clarity, I'm happy to do so.
Yes, please do.
Could I have asked a question?
Absolutely.
Before we do the motion? I wonder if while we're, while we're making motions or amending motions, uh, I would like to just, uh, propose that Brenda Mead be the council liaison to this commission since she, uh, has been working on this issue. So I wondered if that could be part of the motion or whatever.
Mr. Blair, is that appropriate? Any issues?
Well, I, I think you can. I would ask that since that's a membership aspect of this, if after you act on Ms. Mead's motion, uh, or Counselor Mead's motion, Counselor Dole, if you want to make that a separate, separate motion.
All right, Councilor Mead, could you please repeat your motion?
Thank you. I move that council proceed with establishment of a council-appointed commission for equity and diversion, and I'm sorry, diversity. Staff will develop a resolution establishing such a commission to be discussed and considered by council at a later date.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Dole has second, any further discussion? I would like to state that, um, it is my belief whenever you have an opportunity to have the voices of the citizens heard, you need to act upon it. I will be supporting this motion. All right, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Councilor Dole.
I would like to make a motion to, uh, have Ms. Mead appointed as the council lia, the initial council liaison for this commission.
Right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I will second that.
Right, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead. I think I should, it's appropriate that I abstain.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Right, you have your commission. Thank you, and thank you, Councilor Mead, for being willing to serve.
And, and I thank all of you for your commitment to equity and inclusion and diversity in our city.
Thank you. All right, the next item is item D, discussion and consideration of a resolution of the council of the city of Stanton authorizing the adoption of the Central Shenandoah Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty update. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Scott Garber, the city's fire chief, will present this item.
Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. Um, so instead of that, uh, that full mouthful of the Central Shenandoah Hazard Mitigation Plan, I'll just refer to it as the plan. Um, before you tonight, you have a consideration of a resolution for that. And I'll give you a little background history on that. The Central Shenandoah region is comprised of twenty-one local jurisdictions that make up, uh, that are a part of this plan. The Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand required local government to develop and adopt a hazard mitigation plan in order to be eligible to apply forward and receive certain hazard mitigation grant funds. The original plan was adopted in two thousand and five. It was therefore updated in two thousand and thirteen, and here we are again in twenty twenty with the second update to that plan. The update process began in twenty nineteen, uh, with meeting, meetings including the planning or the plan steering committee, which was made up of local and state government staff, uh, public representation, private and nonprofit sectors, and as well as interested citizens. Uh, each jurisdiction updated their mitigation strategies that are included within the plan, and I'll talk a little bit about those here in a minute. Um, as part of the plan process, public involvement was encouraged and was, for the most part, done through online surveys as well as a few community events, which was all prior to the pandemic. The Hazard Mitigation Plan itself is about six hundred pages long. Um, it has tagged to that a regional wildfire, uh, plan that is about a hundred and thirty-five pages. Within those plans, it has a ranking of the hazards that impact, uh, each region itself, historical information about specific severe weather events that have occurred in the past, broad categories of mitigation for, or, excuse me, mitigation strategies for each jurisdiction, as well as regional capabilities assessment. Um, I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have about the plan.
Any questions?
Uh, Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Councilor Mead.
Chief Garber, uh, this was a thousand-page document, uh, that, that covered these, that, these mitigation plans. And, uh, and I, I, I didn't spend really enough time, I think, uh, uh, you know, studying this plan. What, what are the implications for our city? Uh, if we adopt the plan and then don't allocate the funding that's needed to, uh, to provide the, you know, um, to, I guess, follow the recommendations of the, the mitigation. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking specifically of, of flood mitigation, you know, stormwater issues like we had last year with these two five-hundred-year floods that inundated Stanton in such a short period of time.
So if I understand your question correctly, you're asking about local funds, uh, as in city funds?
Yeah, yeah, I guess that's what I'm asking. I mean, if, if we don't, if we do not, as a city, uh, make this a priority, it, it, will it impact our ability to get, uh, grants and federal funding and that sort of thing?
Yes, ma'am, it is required to be adopted to receive any federal mitigation funds. And I believe your next council meeting, you may have a flood mitigation grant on there that would require the passing of this resolution.
Thank you, I appreciate knowing that. I was not aware that that was coming up on the agenda.
Any other questions?
Any additional questions by council members? All right, thank you. Right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move that city council adopt a resolution authorizing the adoption of the Central Shenandoah Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty update.
There's a motion on the floor, Councilor Claffey.
I'd like to second that.
All right, we have a second by Counselor Claffey, any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right, thank you. The next item is item E, a consideration of letter of support of C O P N, request number V A eight five eight two Augusta Health for additional general purpose operating room. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Leslie Beauregard, our assistant city manager, will present this item.
Thank you. Um, you actually heard from Mark Larissa earlier in the work session about a request that Augusta Health made last month, um, to have city council approve a letter of support for their application for a, um, specifically the public need for an additional general purpose operating room. While I can't repeat what he said, I'll say a little bit about the operating room based, um, on the information that they provided. Um, so the purpose, Augusta Health proposes to expand general purpose operating room capacity at its facility through the conversion of an existing special procedure room to a general purpose operating room. Um, this will address the current needs they have now and expanded needs that they have. They did, um, you know, they have mentioned that they want people to be able to receive these procedures in the area, and this will help with that certainly. It'll also create nine new full-time positions, including six nurses, two surgical technicians, and a surgical assistant. And as Mr. Larissa stated, the estimated cost for changing a procedure room and a new, to a new compliant operating room is approximately a million dollars. Um, you have the letter in your packet that, uh, the mayor would sign on behalf of city council, um, that would go to the Virginia Department of Health, who is currently reviewing the C O P N. Um, and with that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? I, Vice Mayor Robertson.
Uh-oh.
Actually, Leslie, I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Blair. As much as I want to vote for this, can I vote for this as a part-time employee of Augusta Health?
My advice would be, and under the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act, uh, I, my advice would be that you should abstain from this.
That's my assumption, if I want to make sure.
And, and if you don't mind, just for the record, what you just stated, if you can state it again for the clerk.
Yeah, um, for the clerk, I, as much as I would like and support, uh, to vote for this, and I do support it, uh, it is, uh, best for me to abstain from this vote, uh, being that I am employed, uh, part-time, uh, by Augusta Health.
Are we good?
Yes.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor. Mayor Oaks.
Um, Councilor Darby.
Mayor, as I move, the city council approved the proposed letter of support for the C O P N, request number Virginia eighty five eighty-two Augusta Health for an additional general purpose operating room.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Um, Councilor Mead.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, item F is a consideration of substantial amendment to F Y twenty nineteen annual action plan, substantial amendment to F Y twenty twenty annual action plan, and F Y twenty twenty one annual action plan relating to the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant Program for the city of Stanton as a HUD entitlement community. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, Billy Vaughn, the city's director of economic development and community development, will present this item.
Welcome.
Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and members of council. Um, with tonight's proposal, uh, the city will be moving into its third fiscal year as a HUD entitlement community. And we have with us tonight Jessica Lurz, who is, let me first say, you've met her before, but this time is in person, she's been on the Zoom in the past. She's with M and L Associates, and they're the consultant and specialist, uh, that has been guiding the city, uh, through many, through the maze of federal regulations to comply with HUD C W G funds. She'll provide a brief overview of what you have in your packet, um, and then will address any questions you might have regarding either the substantial amendment or the twenty twenty one annual action plan. And I will point out that there's a resolution in your packet as well for council to consider, uh, these plans. And with that, I'll turn over to Jessica, again, the specialist.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you, great to see you all in person now, and seen you twice now with Zoom. So thank you all for having me, as Billy mentioned, we'll be talking about the, um, twenty twenty- As Billy mentioned, we'll be talking about the, um, 2021 Annual Action Plan for your Community Development Block Grant Funds, and then, um, some substantial amendments that we'd like to make to prior years. So your 2019 and your 2020 funds, in order to receive that funding, if you want to make any line item changes, HUD requires that you do a substantial amendment. Um, and so we are proposing a substantial amendment to both your 2019 and your 2020 plan. Um, for 2019's Annual Action Plan, we're proposing that we take previously allocated funds to Habitat for Humanity's Critical Home Repair Program and cancel that program, but take the money to be used towards the A Street Aging in Place Project, which will be bringing about 21, um, affordable housing units to the City of Stanton in around 2023. We're also looking to use the same funds in the 2020 Annual Plan that we allocated towards Habitat's Critical Home Repair and reallocating that for the A Street, uh, project as well. The A Street project is going to be a pretty substantial amount of money, and so Habitat for Humanity is hoping that they can use those prior year funds and roll it into this larger project, since they'll be able to bring, uh, greater affordable housing to the city. The last substantial amendment that we're looking at, well, I came with you last time, we removed some funds from the Rockway Street Waterline Project to help pay for something with Valley Supportive Housing. We're coming back for the 2020 plan to make that Rockway project full, and so we're going to be reallocating money, uh, an additional $25,000 for the Rockway Street Project. So those are the substantial amendments that we're looking at for prior year programs. Um, for the 2021 Annual Action Plan, as you all have heard before in the past, we have to go through a consolidated planning process and an annual action process in order to use these funds. That requires stakeholder input, requires quantitative and qualitative data analysis and reviewing and, uh, creating a strategic plan. So we did that back in 2019, and then this year we did two public hearings to get formal feedback on the proposed projects that we'll be giving you today. In order to use your funds, there are specific eligible activities that HUD allows you to use your CDBG funding for, and, um, up here are a number of those. And in addition to meeting an eligible activity, they must also meet a national objective. So they have to either benefit low and moderate income persons, or prevent slum and blight, or meet an urgent need. Um, the city's consolidated planning goals are listed here, and so any project that we bring for you tonight must be an eligible activity, meet a national objective, and meet one of your strategic planning goals. So in order to be considered a low and moderate income, uh, resident in the City of Stanton, HUD puts out an annual, uh, area median income chart, which is presented here for you. So a household of four, um, making $56,950,000 a year would be considered low to moderate and would be able to benefit from services that are created through the CDBG program. So for 2021, HUD allocated $344,362 to the City of Stanton. 15% of that is allowed to be used towards public services. So the city has allocated exactly 15% to the five listed, uh, public service agencies here. So Valley Mission will be doing a rental assistance program for persons who are exiting homeless shelters. We have the Senior Transportation Program, which would be receiving $10,000. Meals on Wheels would receive another $10,000 to continue their services. Blue Ridge Legal Services will also be receiving funding to help low-income residents who've been impacted by the pandemic, um, and maybe facing evictions. And then Blue Ridge Casa, which provides advocacy for abused and neglected children in the area. The remaining funding would be going towards the improvement of public infrastructure. I mentioned the A Street Aging in Place Project will be allocating $153,000 towards that to develop the street scudders, sidewalks, and waterlines for, uh, up to 23 new homes at the end of A Street in Stanton, Virginia. Um, the public facilities improvement will be putting a digital $40,000 to make sure that we can get the West Beverly Street Sidewalk Project completed, um, and that should give some ADA compliance and accessibility to that part of the area. And then Re Roofing Stanton will be receiving $30,000 to provide roof for low-income homeowners. Actually got to go visit one of their projects today and meet one of the residents who benefited from a roof, and very lovely woman, she was very appreciative of it. So I thought you all should know that it really is getting to the hands of people who need it in your community. And lastly, the city will be taking the, uh, maximum allowed amount of administration fees, $68,000, and that will be the total 2021 allocation. So, um, we hope to have the resolution completed tonight. We did have this on public display for 30 days, and we would be submitting to HUD on Friday, where you would have a program start date of October 1 of this year. So that's it. Any questions?
Any questions by council members?
This is Brenda Mead.
Councilor Mead.
Uh, were, was there any response or feedback, uh, for the public hearings that you did?
We did not have any participation in either one. We held one on June 7th and July 12th, and we had no one show up for the meetings.
These were in-person hearings?
Yes.
Was there, was there telephonic or electronic access to these hearings?
No, we didn't do that for these. We just did the in-person public hearings.
Well, I, I, I would just like to say that, that this is a, an incredibly important program to our community, and if we're not getting feedback, if we are not getting citizen input, that means we're not reaching people with, 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 uh, with these opportunities. The City of Stanton just did a survey of citizens on what their priorities were for us to pursue in the next two years, and we got 200 people to provide feedback on that. I don't understand why we are not getting citizen input on this issue.
We certainly could do surveys in the future. HUD has been really lenient on allowing for the, um, virtual. Typically, you're not allowed to do virtual meetings for these types of programs. However, due to the pandemic, we did make substantial changes to our citizen participation plan, which would allow for virtual meetings. Um, but as things were starting to open up, the city, um, staff decided that they thought it would do well to have it in person. But I certainly hear that feedback, and we can start using surveys in the future and see if there are other ways of communicating and connecting with the public.
Uh, why, why would, why would you ask for citizen feedback and input in a way that doesn't actually get you citizen feedback and input? It just doesn't make sense to me. It's a waste of resources, uh, for us to pursue feedback from citizens if we're not going to get it.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead. Yeah.
Um, that was my call, and I'll take responsibility for that. We did advertise in the newspaper, uh, in addition to people attending the public hearing. They could also email me. Uh, we did post it on our website. Um, I, I vaguely remember last year when we did this and had a public hearing and allowed virtual input. We may have gotten one or two people to respond to that format last year. Uh, what we also try to do is rely on all the agencies, Valley Mission, BPAS, Blue Ridge Legal, uh, to reach out to the folks that they serve to try to spread the word, because they're the ones who are benefiting from this, and they have better access to those folks. So we, we rely heavily on them as well. So I'll, I'll take the heat for that, and we'll try to change up and do it differently next year.
I appreciate that, Billy. I'm not putting, I'm not, it's not my intention to put heat on you. It's simply an expression of frustration that, uh, that when, when we hear from our citizens in this, uh, in this survey that we just did, that affordable housing was number five on their list of priorities. And so how do we get that kind of response from 200 people and that we, and we can't get anyone to, to, to respond on these, you know, public hearings? So, so Billy, please appreciate, it's not an indictment of you or any decisions you've made. It's simply a frustration that we're operating here without citizen input, frankly.
Uh, not at all. I didn't take that any other way. I was going to blame Jessica for it, but I decided to take the heat.
Well, I mean, you know, it's always good to have somebody down, down, down the ladder. It's always good.
Any questions? Any other questions?
Any other questions? Um, I would just like to know, did you work with Anna Levitt with Capsol?
I did, when I was, um, actually, in a previous life, I worked with her when I worked for the City of Alexandria. About two years ago, I was the Community Action, uh, Executive Director there. So I did.
Okay, did you work with her at all?
She and I communicated, yes, via email, so.
Okay.
We did.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, with that, um, Councilor Dole.
Because, uh, because I was, uh, more prepared than Vice Mayor Robertson, I contacted the, the famous attorney over here earlier in the week to give me the appropriate language, which I will read at this time. Pursuant to Stanton City Code Section 2.10.130, I have the appearance of a conflict of interest regarding item, oops, the, the numbers changed, Item F. My brother is the Executive Director of Blue Ridge Legal Services. As that organization will receive funds if the FY 21 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan is adopted, I will abstain from voting on this item because of the appearance of a conflict of interest, not an actual conflict.
Well played, Councilor.
And Mayor Oaks?
Yes, Councilor Mead.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm going to say what she said, uh, because I've been recently elected to the board of the, um, of Habitat for Humanity. And so in order to avoid, avoid the appearance of a conflict, I will abstain from this vote.
Congratulations.
Mayor Oaks.
Uh, yes, Councilor Dole.
None of us have, uh, uh, come, uh, get on any other boards that keep us from voting on this, or at some point we won't vote, uh, approve it.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Claffey.
I move that City Council adopt the attached resolution approving and adopting the fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020 substantial amendments and the fiscal year 2021 Annual Action Plan, and authorizing and directing the city manager to sign sub-recipient agreements and associated documents with agencies recommended to receive the HUD CDBG funds.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks.
Councilor Darby.
I second that.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I just want to say that, um, Jessica spent most of the day touring other agencies that have received funding and checking their files to make sure that they're in compliance, so that we don't end up in trouble.
That's right.
And there are some forms for you to sign, so we can get this document submitted tomorrow.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
And I want to thank her for a wonderfully concise report. I was afraid you were going to read all 200 pages that were in the agenda.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
I have a 50-page slide, so I wanted to show.
Next up. All right, that takes us to Item G, a consideration of a resolution of intent of the Council of the City of Stanton, Virginia, to amend the Stanton City Code to add an extension for existing lots without the required street footage, uh, frontage, excuse me. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, City Attorney John Blair and not Senior Planner Rodney Rose will present this item.
Welcome back.
Cotter. Good evening, uh, Mayor Oaks and Council. Again, as expressed in the work session, after the last City Council meeting, Councilor Claffey contacted me and wanted to work on an amendment to the proposed zoning text amendment that was not adopted by Council at your last, at your July 22nd meeting. And the amendment, uh, that we discussed during the work session would allow for, for lack of a better term, landlot lots, if they're able to obtain an easement of 10 feet in width or greater, to develop one single-family dwelling that may use that easement per lot. And again, as discussed at the work session, um, this should be referred to the Planning Commission, and that's what the resolution before you would do, is to refer this to the Planning Commission. They will hold a public hearing, they will make a recommendation, and then that will come to Council for a public hearing and final action.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Blair? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilor Claffey.
I move that Council adopt the proposed resolution of intent of the Council of the City of Stanton, Virginia, to consider amending Section 18.120.10, setback exceptions of Chapter 18.120, yard building setback and open space exceptions of Title 18 zoning of the Stanton City Code to add an exception for existing lots without the required street frontage.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead.
Um, Councilor Dole has a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Mead, did you have?
No, no, I'm sorry, I just didn't hear the second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Dole.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Did you, did you feel that every single action item on this agenda was unanimous by this council?
It's because Terry's not here.
Oh, yeah. All right, the next item is matters from the city manager. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. Um, two items. First, um, Council on the Public, uh, is, are, are well familiar with, uh, our initiative, shop and dine out in downtown, uh, which resumed last April and will continue through the end of October through Halloween. I, I want to share with you all that we're making some efforts to restore the use of the sidewalks. Um, and in, in order to achieve this, uh, we are working with, uh, the Alcoholic Beverage Control Authority, which has some regulations that, um, are implicated by a, a change, but it's our hope that we're going to be in a position to move the seating areas entirely into the street, so that the full use of the sidewalks is restored, uh, to the public. So, um, my, my hope is that we can achieve that, uh, within the next couple of weeks, so that at least for the last month and a half or so of the program this year, um, that, that, uh, use of the sidewalks will be possible. And then the second item is simply to call Council's attention to the grants, the grants update that is on the second page of the regular meeting agenda, which identifies a very small grant, uh, for which the city has applied, no local funds required, and so consistent with the amended Council Procedure Memorandum, we're reporting to you on that grant. Thank you.
Right, thank you. All right, the next item is matters from the public. I will read the rules for matters from the public, because our most esteemed city attorney requires it. Matters from the public. This part of City Council's agenda is entitled Matters from the Public. It is a time that Council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a wide variety of subjects. Before we begin, I'd like to share five basic ground rules that we ask you to respect as you make your remarks. One, please come to the podium or begin your call. Identify yourself and complete your remarks within five minutes. I will let you know when you've reached your five minutes. We ask that you please give your name, your address, and then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time limit has expired. If you continue to speak, I will ask you to step away from the podium or to end your call. If you continue to speak after I inform you that you have exceeded your time limit, I will again ask you to please stop speaking and step away from the podium or end your call. If you still continue to speak, I will ask the Clerk of Council to end your call, and if you continue to speak from the podium, you may be charged with disorderly conduct under Virginia Code Section 18.2-415A2. Number two, this is a time for us as a council, simply to listen to your remarks. In an effort to encourage and maintain orderly conduct, we will not engage and give and... In an effort to encourage and maintain orderly conduct, we will not engage in give-and-take debate. If you are seeking information, you may mention it during your remarks, and the city manager or his staff may get in touch with you in the days ahead. Three, we ask that you direct your comments to Council as a whole and not to identify members of Council or to an individual employee of the city. If you want to take up an issue with an individual member of Council or an employee, please speak with us before or after the meeting. We are also accessible by phone, mail, or email. Again, we ask that you direct your comments to the Council as a whole. Four, we expect every speaker to be civil and courteous. Using profanity, making personal attacks on an individual unrelated to the performance of their official duties on behalf of the City of Stanton, and doing anything that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be tolerated. Five, finally, as the presiding officer, it is my duty to remind you that if you choose not to abide by these ground rules, I may find that you are out of order and will ask you to withdraw from the podium or to end your call. We certainly do not want to reach that point and even beyond, so we respectfully ask for your full cooperation in observing these guidelines. If you wish, you may obtain a copy of the ground rules from our Clerk of Council, Mrs. Zinni. And now we welcome all speakers. The podium is now available for matters from the public as well as remote participation using the Zoom platform. Not bad, I didn't have my glasses on. All right.
Should have memorized them.
I know, right? All right, would anyone like to address the council? Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Members of the council and members of the public who are still here, my name is Leslie Kip. I live at 16 Church Street in Stanton, and I've lived here since 2012. I was going to just make this very short and simple because I have prepared a letter, which I trust has been distributed to all the council members about an incident that happened on August the 3rd, a week and a half ago. And I was just going to say that I wanted to, I would ask you to read that letter and think about it, but in light of some of the discussion this evening, I think I might just expound a little bit on this. Now, this is extemporaneous, so if you, if I run over my time, I will graciously leave the podium when you cut me off. I am a professional photographer. I've been a photographer for more than 20 years. Tomorrow, I will begin my seventh year as a photographer for the Stanton Music Festival, and I've done this all pro bono, and I will continue to do it pro bono. I have enjoyed, as a hobby and as somewhat professionally, I have photographed around Stanton for the last eight years. I photographed events, I photographed impromptu things, I like to photograph trains, I go down to the train station, and I've, because I enjoy make, kind of recording a history of what's going on in Stanton. In addition to that, I photographed President Obama, I photographed President Biden, I stood as far as this post from the Secret Service agents as I photographed these presidents. I photographed in downtown Detroit, I photographed in downtown Philadelphia, in some pretty rough areas. I've been on a lot of construction sites. And I've, so I've been around a bit. Last Tuesday, a week ago Tuesday, I was walking down, or I started to photograph, I was standing across from the bank, photographing a Black Lives Matter demonstration that was taking place. I was alone, I was the only person on that sidewalk. A Black Lives Matter person walked across, saw me, walked across the street, he had a prominently displayed pistol, and he came up and he tried to block my camera. We talked, and he kept inching closer and closer, telling me that if any time, if I touched him, that would be assault. He was then joined by several other people, many of whom would not, most of whom would not show their faces. At another, at one point, someone stuck a, it's a very large camera in my face, clicked away automatically. Then they proceeded, there were about four or five people who surrounded me, and somebody pushed me. I was quickly hit and pushed by two more people. As I turned to leave, the man with the pistol momentarily blocked my exit. I was then hit, and the lens hood on my camera, which is pretty firmly affixed, was knocked off the camera. At no time was there a Stanton policeman in the vicinity. As I went down to get the camera, the lens hood, I looked up, Stanton policeman came around, parked in front of the District Courts Building, boom, Black Lives Matter disappeared. Soon after that, one more Black Lives Matter came across very ostentatiously, planted his selfie stick in front of me with his camera, and started photographing me. I want to bring this attention to your attention because you have now passed your Equity Commission, and there were some remarks at the beginning of the meeting, but this is the only time in my life as a photographer that I have ever been physically attacked, and it happened on South Augusta Street in Stanton, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Zinni, do we have anyone with their hand raised in Zoom?
I do not have anyone with their hand raised.
Is there anyone else from the audience? Hello, welcome.
Hello, my name is David Verde. I live at 125 College Circle, my glasses on so I can read. It's nice to see everyone again. Forgive me for tossing a bunch at you tonight. Feel free to buckle up for the next five minutes. First off, as you likely know, the new recycling center is proving to be less than optimal, which again, I'm sure you're aware of. Feel free to reference my long list of ideas for single-use waste reduction programs I shared with you earlier this year. Our goal as a city should be to find ways to reduce our single-use waste, not just redistribute it in systems like recycling that struggle to keep up with a wasteful culture. I would also like to make a remark after reading some comments made by council members at your retreat. Two words I often faced with contention in my various endeavors in community advocacy were change and progress. I know all of you ran for office with the intention to help our community for the better, so I would encourage you to all reflect on what influences your perception of these two words when it comes to making decisions for our city. The idea of change is always hard to adjust to for everyone, not just those of us who are knowingly hesitant. If it's a new initiative or action item, it seems too progressive for our community, your perception could be affirmed or even swayed by simply finding another city of similar size, similar demographics, or similar historical charm, and ask what their concerns they had, as they might have been the same as yours before you attempt to whatever Stanton might be considering. Better yet, take a field trip and visit them in person. You may feel your agenda for a city like Stanton is unique, but I assure you, you will find places and people who share all the same worries, but took a chance, and it ended in success. Or you could have flopped, and you could be confident in your opposition. Moving on, I do want to share a project I've been working on for a couple of years. I plan to visit you often to share updates, as it will be ongoing, but I've started a video series called Drive Less Stanton. I've been advocating above all things in my lifetime for making biking for fun, biking for transportation safer and accessible. These videos aim to show uncut journeys through town via bicycle or on foot, and highlighting all the shortcomings and safety concerns bike riders and pedestrians face due to reckless drivers or poor road design. I hope they also easily, I hope they also show flexible, easily fixable infrastructure our city could put in place for those citizens who cannot afford a car, or for those like myself who choose to bike or walk as a means of transportation. I hope they might generate more vocal support for the city to take action on the bike pedestrian master plan sooner rather than later. But I also hope other residents who may wish to reach for a bike or walk instead of their car, who are just timid, too timid to do so, can use it as a guide for a reasonably safe option to get about town on bike or foot. First video I'm about to finish up this week, hopefully tomorrow, will show a bike trip from downtown to Lowe's, Walmart, and Cheats. I'll email you the link once it's public. Lastly, I plan to extend an invitation to you all to visit me this weekend downtown on Beverly Street. I've been setting up my telescope about once a month this summer and sharing views of the moon with random passerbyers for free. However, it's looking to be raining, so it's unlikely a good bet. Regardless, I hope to eventually make my first of three personal invitations to various outreach events to council and a few other city officials. My long-term play is to seed the idea to consider making Stanton a dark-skies community in a 10-year master plan. I'm planning to do some outreach in the, to my neighbors and rally support to make my block a dark-sky-friendly neighborhood, so I am starting small. There's more to it, it does include some conversations about light pollution, but also Stanton's proximity to very dark skies, just a short drive to the west, and that currently no town or city has claimed to a certified international dark-sky community on the East Coast. For now, however, though, when the weather decides to cooperate, I'll invite you then to come and enjoy seeing the moon, possibly the rings of Saturn, the moons of Jupiter, when the skies are clear enough for you to stop by, and I'll send an email when that's plausible, including the times and location. And don't worry, I won't braid you of lofty ideas for the city. If you do come by, and I'll just let you enjoy my telescope and enthusiastically share the cosmos and maybe answer some fun moon facts if I know the answer. So, thank you for your time. As always, I will email you, copy of my statement after the meeting.
Thank you. Mrs. Zinni, anyone on Zoom?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised on Zoom.
Anyone else?
You all know me. My name is Albino Albert Fossa, 401 Bowling Street. I've been coming to this meeting here for the last five or six times. I've never gotten much time to express all my views here. Inflation is up 5%, 6%. There, I'm talking about increased assessments on real estate. There are in Stanton many homes, approximately 178, between $200,000 and up, which have no increase at all in assessments. Why? I don't know. There are also many homes between $200,000 and up, which have a decrease in assessments. Why? I don't know. There are in Stanton many homes over $101,000, between $50,000 and $100,000, whose assessments have increased by 10%, 15%, 20%, on up to 50, on up to 75%. Why? Does the Real Estate Department and the Real Estate Appeals Board have integrity? I'm not sure. They may be honest, but do they know the difference between what's right and what's wrong? And will they do the right thing? I don't think so. Why the difference in all of these assessments? Quite a bit. Then there are home assessments increased by 5% or 6%? Why aren't they just increase every home in Stanton by 5% or 6% so that everyone is treated equally and fairly and not discriminated? That I don't know. Why? And why are these expensive homes not increased? And why so many of them decreased? I can't understand. All the above that I've mentioned represent discrimination. I think you wanted to do some things to change Stanton, but nothing has been changed. I've been picketing, and I picket because I'm being discriminated against. There are houses over at, if I can write it, Baldy, Balden Drive, which is in the north section of Stanton. Those houses are all assessed, for the most part, at $55,000. These are beautiful houses in beautiful areas. Why only $55,000? No increase at all. In fact, a good many of them had decreases. Why? I don't know. I'd like to find out. Look at all these houses. They're all there, and this is just some of the roads. No increase. My house has been increased by over 15%. Way out of line, way out of line. It was put together by garbage wood from the landfill. It was burnt out. I have all of these houses, rich houses. Look at them. No increases. Why? I have a whole bunch of them, decreases. Why? I can't understand. I have houses, pages and pages of houses, which lie between $50,000 and $100,000, and they're all increases, all increases. And then at the back, I have a whole bunch of houses over by Bowling Street, which have all, no increases, 50,000 houses. I've been very happy to trade my house in Stanton, next to the railroad tracks, 13 feet away from the railroad tracks. How did they raise it from $69,000 and several years ago? They raised it by 164%. And then on top of that, by another 15% over 15%. How did they get to these numbers? I've asked for meetings with the Appeals Board.
Mr. Fossa, your time is up.
I'm sorry.
Mayor Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead. This is Brenda Mead. Mayor Oaks, this is Brenda Mead. I'd like to move that council will allow Mr. Fossa to finish his statement.
This is ludicrous.
Cut, cut. Mr. Blair.
That is permitted by the council rules. If, if, if the council wishes to allow, it would need to take a vote to waive the time period, though I, I do want to certainly state to Ms. Mead, you know, there are equal protection aspects to this, and making this one vote by council for one individual, there would need to be, unless you want to ultimately entertain motions for every, every speaker, there'd need to be some rational basis to differentiate here.
A rational basis to differentiate?
Correct. As to if, again, if, when you talk about the First Amendment and you say you want to allow one person to continue with their remarks, I think that could create a situation where other speakers could say, well, I would like to complete my remarks, and in effect, it can create a situation where the council would have to let everyone complete their remarks past five minutes.
Do council procedures, do our current council procedures allow us to make exceptions?
They do, but, but I would state, like I said, you would need to come up with a, some sort of rationale to allow one speaker to complete that you would be able to point to, to say why you wouldn't allow other speakers to complete if they asked for the same privilege.
And that's my responsibility in making a motion, or is that the responsibility of council as a body?
Well, I think the council would be voting on the motion that you're making, so I would imagine during the motion, you would need to point out that rational basis of some sort.
Counselor Dole would like to make a comment.
I just want to add something, Ms. Mead, that you may not be aware of. Mr. Fossa has provided us with information that you don't have because you're, you're not here tonight, but we can, we can scan that in and, and email it to you, and I think that might be, would that be helpful, Mr. Fossa?
The only thing that's going to be helpful, and you can hear me, I think, because my voice does care, is that I want a meeting with the Appeals Board. Everyone on the Appeals Board is a realtor. How does one ever get an honest, responsible opinion? How does one ever get an honest, responsible opinion from a bunch of realtors who benefit to a very large degree? And how can one section of Stanton be, and they're very expensive houses, they're only assessed at 50,000, when they should be assessed at 150,000?
Mr. Fossa.
How can you get...
Mayor Oaks, it's Fossa. Fossa.
Fossa.
It's not Fossa.
All right, my apologies, Mr. Fossa. So...
Ms. Mead has a motion. I don't know if she wishes to add anything to it to establish a rational basis.
It's not the money.
All right, Mr. Fossa, you can give us one moment to decide whether or not this motion is going to be placed by Councillor Mead or not.
It is my rationale here, without the benefit of having received any other information about the citizens' request tonight, my rationale is this. This is a, this is a member of our community who has limited resources, who is, who is like Daniel facing the lyre, who is, who wants, who tells me, because I've stopped him on the street. I've asked him, Mr. Fossa, what do you need in order to, to not stand on the street? I mean, this is a 94-year-old man who is standing on our streets in terrible heat, who feels he has been, who he has not received justice. And what he is asking for is a simple meeting. And I completely understand, and I know this is a long motion, by the way, but I completely understand that there are laws, that the laws provide that we not discriminate against or for any individual, but Mr. Fossa has come to us many, many times, simply asking for an audience. And I believe that for that reason, I believe this council should allow him to just complete his remarks this evening. And then, and then, you know, I would hope that we would find a way to give him something that would, that would allow him to get off the streets and that would, that would satisfy him to some extent, that he would not feel that he has to stand with a walker. And I don't know if any of you other council members have stopped at the side of the street and spoken to Mr. Fossa, but he is, he, and he is, I'm sure, smart about what he's doing. He knows that his appearance on the street with signs and a walker is compelling. I simply, I simply don't want to continue to allow him or continue to require him to stand out on that street corner and make his case. Allow him to make his case here in city council. And so that is my motion, that he be allowed to make his case here instead of on the street, and that we give him, if you want to give him 30 minutes, 30 seconds, or a minute more, that we simply make a motion to allow him to speak his piece.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second by Councillor Dole. Any other comments? Because of the fact that we have had Mr. Fossa before council on several different times, he has had the opportunity to present his case, and it's my understanding, he's also spoken with city staff on numerous occasions. For me, I agree with the city attorney that we need to be very conscientious and fair to all citizens with the five-minute rule. All right, any other comments? Vice Mayor Robertson?
I, too. I feel for Mr. Fossa, and I, Brenda, I'm too going to vote no, but I reckon then I want to turn right around and simply ask our city manager, or is there a way that we can facilitate this man to get him into that committee? That, is that possible? You know, so he can hear with the real estate board or whatever committee's making these decisions? I mean, I don't know. I'm just simply asking, is that a possibility?
I'd be pleased to provide some further detail to members of council in an email, but the short answer to the question, and as we've explained to Mr. Fossa repeatedly, is that all of the timelines that are dictated by the state code have passed. He has had, he has had an opportunity, first with the Board of Assessors, then with the Board of Equalization, and then with the Circuit Court of the City of Stanton, to pursue the issues that he has brought before council. And the time in which he may do so has expired. So we're not in a position to accord him any sort of opportunity or the relief that he seeks.
All right, Ms. Zinni, will you please call the roll? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councillor Darby.
I, I have, you know, I understand that this could be opening, you know, what you do for one, you got to do for others. And I understand our five minutes, but we went through weeks of hearing and listening to people wanting to be heard, and I cannot sit here and not let this man finish saying what he has to say tonight, even though I know that it could come back and mean that at the next meeting, somebody else needs to get that same opportunity. And so I'm sorry that it's not in line with what is in the papers, but that's just how I feel about it, so.
Anyone else? Ms. Zinni, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
No.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
No.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
No.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Motion fails. It's a tie, motion fails?
Correct.
We were so close. All right. Is there anyone on Zoom?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised on Zoom.
All right, anyone else from the audience? All right. Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Luca Amato. I live at 702 Paul Street with my fiance and four-year-old Frenchy. We moved here from Richmond in 2017 to purchase and operate Maria's Pizza and Italian Restaurant on Greenville Avenue. Over the years, we have provided a dozen of jobs to our community and provided the city with hundreds of thousands of dollars in meal tax income, not to mention commercial real estate and property taxes. This past spring, we made yet another investment into our community and purchased the home we have been renting for the past four years. After almost a six-month home buying process, our closing date was set for March 25, 2021. That same morning we were to close, my fiance received a phone call from city engineer Lyle Hart. He had been unsuccessful in contacting our landlords, and he found out my contact information through the water bill at our address. He was calling to schedule a time to cut down our large oak tree to clear the way for an eight-foot wide walkway to be built on an access easement in our yard. This was a complete shock to us. We had never heard of this walkway in the four years we lived there. We immediately put a hold on the closing to further investigate the situation. That is when it became clear to us how intrusive this project was. We started looking at other homes, even putting an offer on one that unfortunately did not get accepted. At this point, we were in a tough bind. Our landlord had to sell their home, and if we didn't buy it, we either had to find another place to rent or purchase. And it's no secret that the housing market was and still is short of inventory and has skyrocketing prices. With virtually no other viable options and the stress of keeping the restaurant afloat after barely making it through the pandemic, our best option was to purchase the home and do our best to rectify the issue with the walkway. This walkway is a part of the Bessie Weller Safe Routes to School Project. It is an eight-foot wide walking path running the entire length of our property with an eight-foot tall retaining wall and an additional four-foot tall retaining wall. Our home is situated on the top of a hill. Though we have a sizable property, most of that property is unusable as it has a steep grade and is heavily wooded. If this walkway were to be built as currently intended, it would take up the majority of our yard, and we would lose the only yard space we have. Our dog would no longer have anywhere to be let out at or exercise. And as mentioned before, we would also be losing our large oak tree that provides our home shade, privacy, and houses many species of birds throughout the year. This would especially be unfortunate considering the serious oak tree decline in Virginia. In the aerial photo provided by city engineer Lyle Hart, it is clear just how close this walkway would be to our own private walkway that leads to our front door. We have two stacked, screened-in porches that are parallel to the proposed walkway. The porches are used daily, with one leading directly into our living room and the other leading into our master bedroom. The intimate proximity of the walkway would expose these spaces of our home to the public, as well as compromise any packages being delivered to us. The privacy of the home is arguably one of its most attractive attributes. We are threatened with losing that privacy, as well as losing $15,000 in property value according to our home appraisal. The large retaining wall brings concerns about stormwater drainage. Our home is on a hill, but is on the downgrade slope. We are also situated at the bottom of an adjacent larger hill, and I have yet to hear any mention of stormwater drainage plans or management. The purpose of this walkway is to provide elementary-age children in our neighborhood an alternative way to walk to school. However, our neighborhood is made up of winding hilly streets and does not make for an easy walk. Furthermore, our street in particular is located at one of the highest points. Once they manage to get to the end of our street, they would use this walkway to get into Aim Street and then walk down Gay Street, which leads to the school. Which, by the way, according to public records, there is currently a registered sex offender living along that route. Considering the inconvenience of this route, how sure is the city that this walkway would be used enough to warrant the money being spent and issues it will certainly cause? The few people who do choose to cut through our street to get to Aim Street already use a gravel path on our neighboring empty lot. This lot has been for sale since 2017. It is a buildable lot, yet has never sold despite numerous cars driving by and looking on a daily basis, probably due to the large boulder formation embedded into most of the property and the awkward terrain. We would like the city to consider using that lot for the walkway if they deem it absolutely necessary to have. After much research, we feel this project was poorly planned, extremely intrusive, and completely unfair for the burden of this project to fall on the shoulders of one family. Lastly, our lawyer and surveyor have combed over our deed, which we have copies of each for each of you. All easements granted to the city by the original developers are explicitly and individually listed. However, the easement that the city is using to build this walkway is not listed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Zinni?
Yes.
Is there anyone on Zoom?
No, I do not have anyone with their hands raised.
All right. Anyone else from the audience?
Mayor Oaks, could we, could we, at council, ask the city manager to review that project?
I was going to ask him after the meeting. I was going to ask him after the meeting, yes. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Trupier. I live at 14 Frontier Ridge Court, and I've got this on my iPad, so help me as I hope it doesn't disappear on me. Tonight, I wish to address the city council about Councillor Mead's proposal for an Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Commission. This is an exciting and much-needed action. I appreciate the city council's decision to move forward with the commission. Our city is so diverse, which leads to its richness. It's a draw for those who relocate their homes here. I hope such a commission will address many of the diverse communities that make the whole of Stanton. Racial, gender, disabled equity concerns are but a few that would fall under such a large umbrella. I speak to you tonight from the disabled perspective. I've been classified disabled for a few reasons over the years. You see, I use a walker from time to time because mobility is an issue for me. That's perhaps the easiest to recognize, but I have other issues that come into play that are not visibly recognized. There are citizens here in the audience that have struggles you may be unaware of that can impede their participation in meetings and other activities. An example is when Beverly Street is closed from Friday evening through Sunday evening. Some of us are unable to shop or dine at the businesses on Beverly Street because access is denied. It is a fine plan for the able-bodied, but it is a real barrier for those who cannot climb hills to access the businesses there. I have dear friends with multiple chemical sensitivities who cannot dine or shop in any of the stores and restaurants because they become very ill when exposed to gas or perfume or other substances. There are, excuse me, I'm going to have to take my mask off. There are other neighbors with vision or hearing impairments who find themselves homebound or not able to participate in social or city events because there is no ASL interpreter or braille alternative. These are but a fraction of the concerns for many of your citizens. There are alternatives to address these and other concerns that would make Stanton far more inclusive, far more welcoming, much more friendly to its citizens and visitors. You received copies of a petition that was begun on Monday morning, asking for inclusive policies and an equity commission to facilitate such work. There is a concept you may or may not be aware of called universal design. It is defined as the design and composition of an environment so that it can be accessed, understood, and used to the greatest extent possible by all people regardless of their age, size, ability, or disability. The Government Services Agency has incorporated this concept, and you can find it in their section 508. They created this section in 2017 with the realization that one in eight people in the U.S. are known to have a disability. For the GSA, they developed an IT program which can be adapted elsewhere. They write, "Universal design ensures that the complete user experience is captured at every stage of the implementation process. This results in a solution designed with all users in mind. This is based on seven principles: equitable use, flexibility in use, simple and intuitive use, perceptible use, tolerance for error, low physical effort, size and space for approach and use." There is a concept called visitability. Visitability is the design approach for new housing such that anyone who uses a wheelchair or other mobility device should be able to visit. A social visit requires the ability to get into the house, to pass through interior doorways, and enter a bathroom to use the toilet. Visitability stresses specific accessibility features from a social reform perspective and countersocial isolation. Charlottesville has taken this concept and created an organization that deals with these issues and calls it visitability. Other cities in our mid-Atlantic region have created commissions and organizations that are dealing with the issues I've mentioned tonight. Stanton does not need to recreate the wheel. We have numerous resources that can take these ideas and spirit them forward. I stand here in support of the creation of an Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Commission, hoping that in its creation, the rights of all the city's citizens will be recognized.
Your time is up. Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
I do not have anyone with their hands raised.
Anyone else from the public that are in attendance tonight? All right, welcome.
I'm sure you needed somebody else up here. I'm going to apologize in advance, but I just couldn't. Charlie Bishop Jr., 38 Woodley Road. It's not a mirage. You're not seeing me three times this week that it's not actual. As you know, I went to the retreat, and that's why I'm here. The citizens of Stanton want you all to put the priority of the city ahead of any petty whatever. Don't bring the drama and so forth. I went to the retreat to see if that... I went to the retreat to see if that was going to happen, and I believe it did. I believe you all made an effort, and I want to commend you for that, that a lot of people that I talked to for the last year or so have been throwing their hands up, just like the facilitator did on a couple of comments that were made. Now, I know that people come to city council meetings to ask for something or to try to stop something. That's, that's what it is. I learned that forty years ago when Dr. Cook and I were good friends and he was on council. And I've always said, every time I've appeared before you, that my hat's off to you for serving. Even if I disagree with you, my hat's off to you. And I do disagree, as we know, we've, we've all discussed it. But, in, in all honesty, I'm here wanting something, but it's not appropriate for tonight. It's, as, as the facilitator said, a lot of things should go to Mr. Rosenberg first, and that's, that's where I'm headed. That's not for discussion. A couple of things happened tonight. I learned, I owned those lots on A Street. I sold them to Habitat, and I'm glad they're finally being used because a private citizen couldn't get the streets built. And we always thought there had to be an entity to get those streets built, so I'm, I'm pleased with that. When my friend, Mr. Kip, said he'd only been here since 2012, I said, good God, I've been here seventy-five years. But what happened to him is, it turns my stomach. And, and here again, you all do not have an envious job all the time, but you've chosen to take it on. I admire that. And as I say, I saw some of the old grudges, but I saw some progress, and I'm here to say that I commend the progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right.
I don't have anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, all right. All right, with that, the Stanton City Council meeting is now adjourned.